I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Mercer County Board of Education. I need roll call, Mr. Davis, please.
District one, Trevor Short.
Here.
District two, Larry Jaeger.
Here.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Here.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Here.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Here.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to welcome Trevor Short.
Absolutely, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Welcome, Trevor.
Congratulations and look forward to working with you.
All right, can I get, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Montgomery, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pruitt, all in favor? Up next, superintendent's report, Mr. Davis.
All right, I'm gonna take my mask off for this one. Now, I'll make this one a little shorter because we do have quite a bit of presentations to go forward. First of all, I want to announce that Monday, March the first, will be a virtual day for the Mercer County school system. The purpose of that is, the staff is getting their second vaccination of the COVID vaccine on Friday, or I'm sorry, on Saturday, and what we have found in research with other schools is that the second dose of the COVID-19 vaccination does affect people more than the first one. So, the fear is that we will not have enough teachers to teach. We will be virtual that way if they don't feel too bad and they can teach virtually. If not, we have another plan for that. So, that's simply because, and most of your other school districts are doing the same thing, is either the day they're getting the vaccine or over the weekend. Some are getting it on Friday, but they're taking off Friday to get the vaccine. So, that's kind of common, but that will be a virtual day. All students will be virtual on March 1st. Which leads me to the next thing. The governor came out yesterday with a new executive order, and I just wanted to cover the highlights with you and some of the changes. And this executive order does require all public schools and preschool, they're all included, they must follow these guidelines. So, that's part of the new executive Here, I'm just gonna hit a couple of highlights. All school districts are encouraged to offer or expand some form of in-person instructional opportunities beginning March 1st, 2021, or if district personnel have not yet finished their vaccine series as of March 1st, seven days after the district personnel have received their second vaccination. And the other one I want to point out is, as of March 1st, 2021, all school requirements tied to color-coded COVID-19 county incident rate maps which listed red or yellow counties are discontinued. So, we will no longer, we may use them if there's a county outbreak or something to that occasion, but we will no longer be making school decisions based day-to-day on the color of the map. The other part is, all public schools shall continue to provide meaningful virtual options for students to choose a virtual option through the end of the school year. So, and we do intend to continue that. And that's the executive order, the highlights that we have. Any questions on that? I will say, thank goodness we're getting rid of the map. For superintendents, it's no day every day that you have to make that decision. It's not a lot of fun. So, with that being said, the last thing I want to talk about, and I get real frustrated, so I'm going to explain, and some of the school people in here will know what I'm talking about. But, public education from New York to Chicago to Los Angeles, we hear teacher unions are, you know, kids can't get in school because of teachers' unions. They need money for this, they need this and this, that and the other. And what I want to get across to our public and parents watching, that's not the case in Kentucky. I think Governor Beshear said yesterday, there's 172 school districts and 172 are already back in person in some form. So, you know, I will say this, for KEA, they have been supportive of everything we've done. They've not fought us or had issues that they thought they needed to fight. And our teachers, I've talked with multiple ones, and they're ready to go back to school and have their kids. You know, that's once we have the second vaccination. But, I just want to get across it. You know, leave the big cities out, you know, as far as Mercer County and then most of your counties in Kentucky, we're already there. You know, we do have to spend some money to get things. A good part, three of our four buildings are already have air filtration systems in them, and that'll be presented tonight by the Texas Volts. We did have to spend $30,000 on student desks. At the elementary, we had what they called buddy tables, where you sit beside each other. Those aren't allowed for us to go back to school. So, we had to purchase 300 school desks so we could have kids separated and placed six feet apart and all in a straight row. So, understand, we're using money for that, different things that we have to do, that we have to provide to continue, continue to keep our kids safe. So, you know, it's easy to get caught up in the national news, but locally, that's not what's happening. Any questions? One other thing, if I can cover this real quick, and I'm only gonna read part of this, but I did want to share this with you. This was sent to me from a parent. It said, "Good afternoon. I have a couple of things that I feel I need to share with you, and please feel free to share it with the schools and the board. My appreciation and respect for teachers has always been very high, but during this pandemic, it has been magnified. I have no idea how they are doing it. I get so tired of hearing, teachers are sitting back, drinking coffee, and still getting paid. I am very quick to jump to their defense. These teachers are working 10 times harder than they were if they were in school. I am super impressed. Teachers are a blessing."
Any questions, gentlemen? I will ask the desks, so those were, those purchases were deemed, I understand necessary, but maybe the word I'm looking for, it was part of the requirement?
Yes.
For us to go back looking at?
Yeah. The requirement wasn't, one of the requirements of Safe at School is you have to have all students facing the same direction. You know, in the cubby chairs, we have two here and two on each side. You have to be in a straight row, or they don't have to be in a straight row, but all the kids have to be facing forward.
Okay.
And those who are paid for with the funds that we got?
Yes, the Part of the Yes or Two funds, yes.
Okay. All righty, sir, thank you. Up next, Ms. Minor with the finance report. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Well, this is the main out. There's the main out. There's the main out.
(inaudible) technology, why? So, I apologize. Sorry if you're not able to hear very well on Facebook. We are working on it. So, anyway, I'll just talk really loud, which is easy for me. So, the finance officer's report is from January 2021. Our ending general fund cash balance was 7.5 million as opposed to 5.8 million last January. The general fund revenue was 2% higher as opposed to last January, including the beginning balance, and our receipts that have actually been received in the year are up 3% compared to the prior year at the same time. We have received 70% of the overall revenue that was budgeted for the year, and that includes the beginning balance, and then we have received 65% of the receipts that were budgeted for the year. On the expense side, we are down 13% compared to the prior year. Our expenses in January were 1.7 million, which kind of offset, December was lower. So, January's a little bit higher, some of those bills that were split between the two months. So, our normal is typically anywhere from like 1.5 to 1.65 typically, so it's not completely way higher. And in December, it was under a million, so they offset each other. We've expended 46% of the budgeted expenses for the year, and that's all good because at the end of January, we are 59% through the fiscal year. So, with our revenue being higher than what we had budgeted and our expenses being lower, it looks like we'll be good. We'll receive probably more revenue than we budgeted for. We hopefully won't expend as many, as much on the expense side as we had budgeted for as well. Down below is just a little bit of a recap of what's coming up. So, tonight, you will be looking at the site-based allocations for next year, and those will be sent to principals and their councils by March 1st. We have some contract bid things to look at. We will also be doing that in March, and that kind of goes basically kind of through the spring as they come up. But, our audit contract is part of that, insurance renewals. And then in March, I, well, I'm already, but it really kicks up for our budget, for tentative budget that you will have to review and approve in May, and our salary schedule in March and April. So, with that, we probably want to talk about a potential working session to have because we do have new board members that haven't been through that process before, when we look at the salary schedule and tentative budget. So, I'll send you all some emails of, you know, some dates and that kind of thing and see what works for you all. So, it's a little bit more laid back. We normally go in the conference room for it, and we can pull out materials, sit down, go through things, line by line if you want, but that's up to you all. So, any questions?
Thank you. Up next, personnel report.
This is an informational-only item. It's just your typical report. The only thing I will say on here, it does say terminations, that does not mean people were fired. That just means that their employment, whether they resigned or retired or different things. So, when you see that, that's not, you know, anything that's been done other than by choice of those people.
Okay.
Any questions on the personnel report? And I will say, you will see one thing on there. You know, I just want to mention that Coach Garrett Stark is on here, you know, the men's soccer coach that we lost in a car wreck, and it's been very tough and devastating for our school and our students. And he was, he was a very nice man. I thought the world of him, so I just wanted to acknowledge him tonight.
Excellent. I was just gonna mention that. Thanks for doing that. I said, I was just gonna mention that. I was, thanks for going ahead and doing that.
Okay, up next, National School Counselor Week.
While he's pulling that up, I would like to introduce myself. Good evening to everyone. My name is Amy Riley. I am the school counselor at Mercer County Intermediate School, and we are here tonight because the first week of February is typically National School Counselor Week, and every year, we come and just share with you guys a brief overview of what the counseling services have been like in Mercer County schools. I do want to introduce the counselors who are here with us tonight. We have school counselor Lori Freeman, if you'll just wave so they can know who you are, from Mercer County Elementary School, Hillary Cheek from King Middle School, Cynthia Russell from Mercer County Senior High, she's in the back, right back there, Stacy Davis from Mercer County Senior High. And I believe that's all of the ones that we have that are present tonight. But, we are excited to be here with you guys, and we'll make this very brief, but there will be a time for questions. If you guys have any, we would love to answer those. So, the first thing that I would like to share with you guys is just our name. And I know that this is something you may have seen before, but in case you haven't, we are no longer guidance counselors. We have evolved into school counselors. This is something that our National Association has pushed, and we are very, very fond of because we have changed completely from the guidance counselor of yesteryear. We want to take just a few minutes, if we can, if I can get this slide to go, and we want to, went too far. We want to thank you all as a school board and our central office staff for making some very much-needed changes. In the last year or so, it has been an amazing, amazing time for us. First of all, school counselors, you may or may not know this, but in Mercer County schools, school counselors now devote 60% of their time to direct service to students. Also, our school counselors are no longer our building assessment coordinators. They are no longer our registrars, and also three full-time social workers have been added. So, we want to say a huge thank you. What does that mean for the students of Mercer County? It means that in very simple terms, counselors are now counseling. There are more classroom lessons that are being delivered. There are more referrals. There are more services that are provided, and Tier One prevention is finally becoming, being provided across the board. So, why does it matter? And why should it matter to the school board that we have enough school counselors in Mercer County? Two reasons that I'd like to highlight. One is because Senate Bill 1, our School Safety and Resiliency Act mandates prevention for our, all of our schools, and it recommends one healthcare provider for every 250 students. And also, some information that you all may not have seen yet is that the Pritchard Committee in Kentucky recently found the following. They identified and said that 41.9% of 11th and 12th graders feel more anxious now than they did before COVID, and compare that to 23.4% of middle schoolers. One-third of our students have a parent in Kentucky who have lost a job due to COVID. One-fourth of students in high school said that they have now changed their career path since COVID, and 54% reported this as a negative change. So, school counselors matter because Tier One matters. Every single child matters. You all may not be aware of this, but school counselors are the only mental health providers in the school system who service 100% of the students. We don't have to have parent permission. We can service every single child who goes through the school system. And to put this in simple terms, as you all can, I'm sure you're familiar with this diagram, but Tier One is the bottom. This shows that 100% of our Mercer County students are serviced by school counselors. And you can see that there are 15% that are serviced in Tier Two, which is done by our school social workers, our psychologists, and our counselors, and our Tier Three, our most intensive students who need behavioral interventions, those are serviced through licensed social workers and psychologists. On the next slide, I'm so proud to be able to share this slide with you guys because we have made some amazing changes in Mercer County schools. You all can see, these are the current healthcare, mental health providers that are in Mercer County schools. I'm not going to read each one of those, but I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for hiring social workers, for having psychologists in every single building. We are now meeting the recommendation that the state has for SB 1, which makes me incredibly, incredibly proud. Now, if I had a wish list, if there was one area that I would like to see the board consider a little bit further, it would be this next slide. Our American School Counselor Association recommends that there be one school counselor for every 250 students, and again, that is because we meet the needs of 100% of the students in the school, and these are our current ratios. As you all can see, we have 1 to 684 at MCES, and I won't read all of those to you, but you can see those. You'll notice the ratios are smaller at day treatment and central. That is because they are very, very much needed there. That is, one of those is mandated from the state, and we are, I'm definitely going to say that that is a huge, huge asset to our school district, that we have those mental health professionals who are there at day treatment and central. What the research says very quickly, if you do have enough school counselors in your school, I want you to look at the things that can happen. If you have one per 250 in your classes, you can increase math and reading scores in high-poverty schools. You can decrease behavioral disruptions. You significantly close the achievement gap among Latinx students. You increase standardized test results among African-American students. You produce just as much, if not more, impact on student achievement than adding even a qualified teacher or lowering class sizes. That is an amazing statistic to me, that if you want to increase achievement, adding a school counselor does just as much, if not more, as adding a teacher. So, I mentioned to you all our future needs, our wish list, if you will. We would love to see the ratio go to 250 to 1 for school counselors. We know that that is a lofty goal, and it's not one that probably has the funding at this point, and we realize that, so we're just a wish list. We are thrilled that we have the state mandate of MHP's Mental Health Professionals at 250 to 1. Our ratio, as you all can see, for school counselors is still between 600 to 700 to 1. We would love to see there be a Director of School Mental Health Services in our board office. We also would love to see more community buy-in, and this is just something I want to share just to the general public. There is still a little bit of a stigma associated with school counseling and mental health services. Sometimes, parents don't want their child to go and see the school counselor. And I just hope that, my wish list would be that we could erase that stigma and that we could just all work together and better communicate on our end the benefits of school counseling so that more of our community members and partners would feel like that it was a safe and wonderful place for their children to be. So, that's, that's the presentation. I do just want to end by saying thank you, thank you, thank you, and hopefully next year, we'll have just as many wonderful things to report. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Riley.
Very good presentation. Okay, up next, we have the Gifted and Talented Report.
School counselors, you can stay if you'd like.
We know how to-
Thank you, Ms. Cheek.
We know how to clear a room, don't we? Bite the people in the back, come up front. Well, you ain't kidding. It's right there. Can they hear us any better? Can they hear us any better?
I think so.
Yeah, that's all you gotta do, but you're gonna have to talk into your mic when we're But, the problem with these microphones is that you gotta be, you gotta be right on top of them.
Hello, my name is Shelley Engler, and my counterpart is Monty Berger, and I work at King Middle School and Mercer County Senior High School. Monty takes care of elementary and intermediate, and also leadership at the high school. Gifted Education Month has been proclaimed for the month of February. We have a proclamation that Mr. Davis is gonna read over and sign. As we're doing that, just, we have a little presentation, just some pictures of things that kids are doing. Is that right? Next one? Okay, all righty. So, just a few pictures of things that, that kids are doing. So, even in the midst of this pandemic, the gifted and talented students of Mercer County have celebrated successes, from winning elections at a state level at Kentucky Youth Assembly to winning competitions to advance to the state level. These students have risen to the occasion. They continue to be motivated and help others through leadership and community service. Okay, maybe it doesn't want to move. I don't know.
Tell me where you want to be.
Oh, yes, okay, there. Yes, so our mission statement that we've developed, making sure that everyone has challenging and engaging learning experiences. We've had lots of Google meets. So, early off, we had lots and lots of Google meets. So, engaging them, making sure, even checking in with their mental health, because that's important as well. Yes, especially in the gifted students. We've had, even in this pandemic, I'm just tickled to death. I have two groups of students that are going to the state governor's competition, which will be March the 13th. And this, I think this is the first year we've had middle school and high school teams advancing to state level. So, here's our high school team, and they're going to compete at the state level in future problem solving. We had a virtual Kentucky Youth Assembly for middle school and high school, and this year, we had a student that ran for office, and she, Abby Sears, and she is, will be serving her term next, next fall.
This is some of our history assembly that we did, credits from last year and the others from yesterday, and we actually recorded it, and the high school will watch it here in AA on Friday, and we were able to do that by recording them. And this is our veterans' assembly, which we also recorded, and the kids watched it and posted on YouTube also. So, we were able to do the two assemblies, the high school leadership group always does, which made me really, really proud because it is not easy to do. I think Randy, if you look up there, your son saw one of those pictures.
Yep, he is, yep.
Programs come really, really well. It's just really hard to videotape and get, especially if you did it in short, such a short amount of time, but while the kids were engaged and it turned out really well for both of them. The senior high leadership kids always do teacher appreciation activities. Of course, we didn't do any last year because we weren't in school, and the teachers weren't there, but they've already started planning what they're doing for this year, and so we'll be the first week in May or close to that, a little earlier with state testing, since I'm the back of the media school, but we'll have treats for the teachers every day. My kids will provide them, and they'll do everything for them. And the next one is bus driver appreciation. One of the things, and I literally had a couple of girls, almost in tears, or something, we were talking about it, and I'm like, "Guys, we can't do a meal." We have done a bus driver appreciation breakfast since the second or third year of the ninth grade academy. We started there with our student advisory council, and then when I got to get the job, the high school leadership kids have always done it. The bus drivers seem to really appreciate it, you know, and the kids are like, "We can't not do something for them." So, the little slogans are on there, and some of the kids have already started working on the goodie bags, and we will have, my leadership kids will meet the kids, meet the bus drivers, and handle them too on the, that weekend, March 8th, for the five days I have a treat for them. And I think that, I mean, the kids appreciate the bus drivers, because a lot of my kids, obviously, most of mine, leaders and teachers are drivers, but they appreciate because they're still, a lot of their athletes or the band or something, and they're, they're still riding the bus, so they know how much. And they, you know, they get attached to their bus drivers, even, you know, the athlete team, they have the hand yard for the whole year, and it's really important for them.
Okay. Oh, you're fine, you're fine.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, sorry. So, we will be doing the bus driver appreciation in two weeks, I guess, and then in March, in May, we'll do the teacher appreciation. My, one program that I have, my kids absolutely love at the intermediate school, it's called Noetic Learning. It's called, it's a challenge math program. So, I'm gonna take about two seconds. Well, we'll have to wash this mic. And I want you all to look at this. This is the math, this is a problem they did. And I actually had a fourth grader who just qualified in math, and he started on it before we came back full force, and he said, "Ms. Berger, I've never learned how to do this math." And I said, "That's the reason it's called challenge math." And so, this problem's probably easy for most of you all, but for them, the problems aren't. And we also had a problem we were working on last week online, and one of my kids said, "Ms. Berger, why are the trains on the same track going towards each other?" And I'm like, "Hmm, that's a good question," but then we solved why and when they needed to stop and stuff, and so it was really, really cool. So, this is the kind of stuff they're doing at the intermediate school in their math program, and it's not core content. It is challenge math. It is above what they're supposed to be doing at this age. And the kids love it, and they love to work together on it. And I just wanted to share a problem because that's been the one thing that the kids love, and when they go on, they're like, "I love that math." Sometimes, I struggle with that math because sometimes I'm like, "I figured it out," but I couldn't tell them how to solve some of them. So, is that it? Thank you.
Well, I can tell you with, I'm a huge fan of the gifted and talented program with a couple of my kiddos have been part of that, so it's near and dear to my heart. So, I appreciate all the work you guys do.
Thank you all, and I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, the Kentucky Association of Gifted Talented Education in Mercer County School District, recognize the need to increase public awareness regarding the unique educational, social, and emotional needs of gifted and talented students. And, whereas, outstanding gifts and talents are presented in children and youth from all cultural groups across all economic strata and all areas of human endeavor. And, whereas, gifted students develop to their full potential only when their special strengths are identified and supported through appropriate educational opportunities. And, whereas, the goal of helping gifted children reach their full potential must be shared by the entire community, policymakers, educators, business leaders, civic organizations, and parents. And, whereas, we must challenge our high-ability students to reach their greatest heights if our state and nation are to achieve the world-class educational system. Whereas, gifted students in Kentucky and Mercer County provide our state, county with a vast potential resource for leadership in all areas of human pursuit, and the economic future of Kentucky depends on developing our brightest students. Now, I, Dennis Davis, Superintendent Mercer County School District, do hereby proclaim February 2021 as Gifted Education Month.
Thank you, sir. Okay, up next, Family Resource and Youth Service Center report. Okay, up next, Family Resource and Youth Service Center report.
Pass it down, you can. I was just nominated to speak for everybody, so.
Speak right into that microphone.
Pull that microphone up there a little bit.
I'm clear, I'm taller than some of the others. So first of all, I'd like to introduce my coworkers. Of course, Jennifer Hatton is here, she's our district contact. So she helps us kind of spearhead some things sometimes. We have meetings with her bi-monthly, and, and she helps us a lot with keeping the state recommendations met. We have Allison Hazelwood, if you'll wave, Allison. She is the Youth Service Center Coordinator at King Middle School. And then Melody Pike, if you'll wave. She is also a Youth Service Center Coordinator at Mercer Central Day Treatment, and then Mercer County Senior High School. Amy Matthews is also a Family Resource Center Coordinator for the intermediate school, and she couldn't be with us tonight, since the date changed, it missed her, her schedule a bit. And then my name's Georgiana Gray, I'm at Mercer County Elementary School, and of course, service preschool through second grade. So, we've been busy, starting in August, even though we were not quite going yet. But I'm just gonna kind of go through this list. And then if anybody has any questions, you can, can talk, you know, ask me at the end. But, we did a drive-through, Welcome to Kindergarten event. I collaborated with the school counselor on that. We had our new families to the district come drive-through. The kiddos were able to pick up a Welcome to Kindergarten bag, and it had several items in it, as well as a list of things that parents could do at home while they were virtually learning and not at school yet, to kind of get their skills up and going. So when we did get back to in person, we also had, we've had several virtual family nights. We, in November, we did a Thankfulness Family Fun Night. We had crafts, we read books, virtually. We had about, I think about 40 families join us for that first one, which was, was really nice. We had staff members that collaborated with us, and it was just, it was a good night. And the kids were so excited. We did lessons, some social-emotional lessons with the families, with our school psychologist. She collaborated with us, as well as our school counselor, our school social worker. We also did our Reading Wonderland, which we have annually. We did that virtually. And then we just, last night, had a Kindness Family Night, and that kind of went along with our Black History Month. We wanted to really promote kindness as a stepping stone for Black History, as well as having some Black History plays that we did. We went virtual with our Ag Week with MCES and MCIS, our All Pro Dads Program. We took it virtual with Coach Buchanan, and it's been really well-received. We're hoping to get that started next month as a live, like a Google Meet. We had done it as a recording and put it on their Google Classrooms, but we're hoping to go live with that. We've also done some virtual Cradle School Monthly through December. In December, we had a live event with them. I will say, that's a population that's been really hard to keep engaged. We need face-to-face with our Cradle Schools. So we are definitely looking forward to being able to get them back, back in person. And then we also partnered with the Hertzberg Rotary Club on a literacy project. They donated funds to buy every single in-person and online student a new book three different times. So we've already given out what, that was kindergarten through third grade. So that, that was a huge amount of donation, and we were so glad. So we've already given out a book in December, one in February, and then we'll do another one next week for Read Across America Week. So Amy, she, of course, she did a big Read Across, not Read Across America, Read Ribbon Week activities with Remix. She did things daily with them. They went all virtual, but it's a really great program. She had the Kentucky Shakespeare folks come. Well, they didn't come on campus, but they did a virtual program, as well as live question answers on a Midsummer Night's Dream for Black History Month. She's had daily visits with past and present mentors. And she also collaborated with the Community Arts Center to bring in The Art of Being Black in America, which was a virtual, also live tour. And then every single student was getting a project kit and lesson on the Underground Railroad. And the project kit would be about how to make your own quilt, and how important that was back in that time of the Underground Railroad. Something else that Amy Matthews and Allison Hazelwood teamed up on is big, turned into a really great project, is their cooking club. Amy kind of enhanced that and ran with it in, not this, this school year, but last school year. She collaborated with the Extension Office and really targeted an audience that, to try to get them eating healthier and fixing their own meals, and not eating so, so much junk, so to speak. So, she had done a wonderful job with that, and she had a lot of fifth graders in that club. So as they were going on to sixth grade, she teamed up with Allison this year, and they wanted to do that, continue that on into King Middle School. So that target audi, audience primarily was our backpack families. Then if the spots weren't filled, they opened it up to others. But Allison loved the idea, well then COVID happened. So they took it virtual, just, we changed everything to virtual. So they set up a Google Classroom. They got Bobby to video a cooking show. I always say Bobby's better than Rachael Ray. She can do a 30-minute meal and make it look fabulous, so. She does a fabulous job with that. They also teamed up with our farmer's market here in Teyon. So the kids got fresh vegetables all through the summer to be able to cook with. They bought all the ingredients for their meals. And so when the kids would come and pick up their backpack on Friday, they would also pick up their ingredients. And then on Monday, they would meet and do their cooking. The kids were so excited, they had other family members, like their cousins, come over to the house. You all got to cook with us! So it was a great program, and it's really done so well, the state just had them do a webinar for the entire state. Because this program has, is, is phenomenal, and it's, it's really, the only one kind of like it in the state. So lots of different coordinators in every county going, oh wow, we got to start this, it's really good. She also did some virtual Black History Plays from Lexington Children's Theater, had Red Ribbon Week activities. And then our backpack program, of course, we all do that, but we've had to change that up a little because of COVID and not using lockers and confidentiality and, and different things. Our parents come and pick up on Fridays. A lot of them do have transportation issues or, or can't come. So it's really impacted our home visits, and we deliver those bags every Friday to several, several students around the city and, and the county. So, just make sure I don't leave anything. Oh, another big project we did, we partnered with the Salvation Army. We gave out over 1,200 food boxes back in the fall. It was huge collaboration with, the, the police officers were directing traffic. The traffic was lined all the way down 127 down to the bypass red light, but, and then curved all through the park. But it was awesome to know that we touched that many families and to work with all of the folks on that. Then, we've also, all of us as a group worked on Christmas and Thanksgiving food boxes. We collaborated with the Herald, who, we were afraid our schools would get shut down with COVID. So, we knew that those families depended on us for their holiday boxes to get their meals. So the Herald stepped up, and they're like, hey, just let's do it here. So they coordinated some food drives for us, because we knew we couldn't have students bring in food to do our food drives, which always helps us with that. Cram the Cruiser events, all kinds of different things. So we are very thankful for the Herald and the Hertzberg Police Department for helping us, as well as all the business partners and community leaders that we had with that. The Mercer County Public Library did a Stuff the Stocking event for us and for other organizations for hygiene items that we were able to give out with, to our kids and our families in need. Toothbrushes, toothpaste, soap, shampoo, all that good stuff, hats and toboggans and scarves. And then Melody has also teamed up with the school counselor. She makes sure that every student that needs a cap and gown, if they can't afford it, she makes sure they get it. And none of the other kids know that they didn't buy it. She's very, very good at making sure that every high school student know, knows that they can get what they need without worrying the other kids. Because we all know, when you get to middle school and high school, kids can pick out things just like that. So she's great at making sure they keep their integrity. And then she's also teaming up with our school counselors and school social workers to do social-emotional coping kits. Just as our school counselor said, there's a lot of kids going through some emotional things, just, just lots of changes, as, as we all are. So she's really teaming up with them to make sure that they get what they need. And I will leave it at that. We thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate, good work.
And, and all three presentations tonight have been wonderful, and they do such an important work, direct work with our students. So I can't thank them enough for all that they do.
Yeah, I'm impressed by the creativity that they've done to, you know, take care of our kids during this time, so.
I was gonna kind of piggyback off that as well. I was just looking at the way that the, the way that this is set up and the process of going from counselor to gifted and talented and family resources in that order. It kind of just shows how the three reinforce the things that are necessary. Because, you know, in sports, we like to say, you look good, you feel good, you play good. Same thing in the classroom, if you feel good about yourself, you, those things help and aid in somebody being able to focus in on, on learning objectives, so, very, very impressed.
We appreciate all the hard work.
Jason Voles could not make it tonight for the CMTA presentation. But this is, he, he will be, we'll see if he can get him for next time. He'll show us where we are in our performance contract that we did over the, not this past summer, the summer before, when we redid some air conditioning at the, actually, every building's had work and done on their HVAC system. I will tell you, one thing that was very helpful to us, is where we were able to call Jason Voles when the cold weather hit. And I learned in my first two years of being superintendent, when it gets really cold, down to close to zero where it was, if you don't open the doors and have your building heated like you do when you have students in there, we have pipes freeze and bust, and we have water damage. So with our new system, I can call Mr. Voles, and he can put everybody on what we call an occupied mode, to keep our buildings heated, keep our doors open. And we did not have any, we had a water leak, but not a water break. So he's gonna come and show how much money we have saved by what we did, and talk with us about, and I think we've exceeded our goals already with the savings. So he'll be here, we'll make sure he's here for the next one, but it's very good news that he'll report to you that we're, how much money we're saving.
That's good.
Alrighty, yeah, looking forward to hearing that. I'd like to see that data when it comes in. Well, I'm sure, not only the upgrades, but then obviously, we have not been in the buildings as much, so there should definitely be some savings. Public participation, do we have anything, Amber? Okay, up next, Consent Agenda.
And board members, one thing I would ask board members, please speak loud in your microphone, close to it, because we are having some difficulty, the, for Facebook Live hearing us. So please speak up and do the best we can.
Okay, up next is Consent Agenda Items. I assume everyone's had an opportunity to take a look at those. If there's any discussion or questions, anybody has?
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Montgomery.
I'll second.
Can I get a second? Mr. Short, all in favor? Amber, for the Consent Agenda, we had a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Short. And it passed, okay. Leave and absence request, Mr. Davis.
If, board members, if you look to your right, you'll see an actual letter that we do not make. That is private information, so that's kept for, just for you to see, so that explains the details.
Can I have a motion to approve the leave and absence request?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pruitt, can I have a second? Mr. Montgomery, all in favor? Architect for District Facility Plan.
Alright, every four years, we're required to do what they call the Local Planning Committee. Our time is up, and we've got to get busy on it this spring. As you know, it's been a while since we've done one, because we just continued, we were, we were given a waiver to continue the, the LPC plan approved the last time. So when we do the LPC, we do have to have an architect, and we recommend that we use Ross Durant, who is our current architect, who knows all our buildings and has worked with us on all the projects that we have. So we would like to continue to work with them and recommend them for the LPC plan.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Montgomery makes a motion for approval, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Short, do you need a roll call for this one?
It's money.
It's money.
Yes, yep.
Okay, need a roll call, Mr. Davis?
Alright, District, I'm gonna go for member here. District 1, Trevor Short.
Yes.
District 2, Cliff Pruitt. I'm sorry. District 2, Larry Jaeger.
Mr. Jaeger, can you unmute yourself?
Technology.
For all the teachers out there, we feel for you. We really do. Billy Montgomery, District 3.
Yes.
Cliff Pruitt, District 4.
Yes.
Randy Phillips, District 5.
Yes. Are you texting? Okay. Okay, well, I guess at this point, we can, we can move on here. Okay, 2021-22 Preliminary SBDM allocations. Ms. Minor.
Okay, sorry for the technical difficulties. I'm always trying to work them out, I don't know. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. You will see the attachment on there are the allocations that, basically what happens for our new board members is I get, I speak with our Director of Pupil Personnel, Ms. Hazlett, and getting, basically what we think are projected numbers for next year will be. With COVID, I'm not real sure if they'll be 100% accurate. We had a cup, a kind of a range, so we went the highest number of students for staffing purposes to be on the safe side. Because if every single student showed up, we have to have a teacher to accommodate that and staff to accommodate that. So that's what these numbers are. We will again revisit this by September 15th. What we normally do at that time, we won't typically take staff away or money away at that time, but we let the principals know what those changes would be. If they get additional staff and money, we will give them that, but we don't take it away. Number one, our staff is already under contract at that point in time, so we can't do anything about that. And then they've already based all of their budgets off of the money that we have allocated to them. So basically, So basically, in September, it's just kind of letting them know it may change come the next allocation more closely to what it ended up being in September. So that's why we do that. So these are projected numbers. They are pretty close to what they currently have. So the elementary school actually is gaining a little less than a full position. The intermediate school will be down three positions, but they currently pay for one of their positions with site base already. So if they continue paying for that, which we haven't talked about that yet, then it'll only be two positions, but we've talked through that. Then the middle school is down two positions, but we also talked about that. Mr. Gordon was aware early enough. He, he kind of knew what was going to be happening, so we've talked through all of that. And then at the high school, they're actually down a position, but they trade some other pieces, and that's what kind of, those notes over to the side, on the right-hand side of that one means for that, that's for me, a reminder for me. So the board actually approved, not last fiscal year, but the fiscal year before, to give them another half a teaching position. Part of this is for the Trailblazer stuff, too. So they switched some of their teachers that actually go over to Trailblazer and also come over here to Day Treatment some and that kind of thing, too, or Mercer Central, too. So then they also have some classified positions that they've kind of rolled in there for one of their positions. So they're still really on track if we continue doing that going into next year. And then Day Treatment and Mercer Central, they just get the money allocation, not the teacher allocation, because those have to hit the guidelines that we have already set forward otherwise. So are there any questions?
Nope.
All right. Thank you, Amber. Can I get a motion to approve the allocations?
I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Montgomery with a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Pruitt, we need a roll call for this.
Uh, I think we're in the board.
Yeah.
District one, Trevor Short.
Yes.
District two, Larry Jaeger. District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Okay, CATS, second offer of assistance.
Should've just stayed up here, sorry. I wasn't looking at the agenda to see what was next. Okay. So we receive these CATS offers of assistance typically two to three times a year, depending on the year, typically three times a year, but that kind of depends on the state budget and that kind of thing. These, this money goes towards a lot of our technology purchases for the district, a lot of our student computers out in the labs, a lot of our staff computers in their classrooms and in offices and that kind of thing. We do have to match the amount. You've already approved and matched the first portion. This is the second portion. We do have it in the budget to match, because that's actually where our budget for those kinds of things come from. So we're kind of getting half off by, you know, accepting this and only paying half ourselves. The state is giving us the other portion of the money. You just have to accept it, so I can submit that.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen? All right.
Spend a little money to make a little money.
Yes.
That's what you gotta do sometimes, don't you? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery with the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Short with a second. Mr. Davis, another roll call, please.
All righty.
We need to print you off a copy of the.
Well, I've got it. I had to get my paper in my office the other day, and I didn't bring it back. District one, Trevor Short.
Yes.
District two, Larry Jaeger. District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Hey, nurse practitioner and district health coordinator. Mr. Davis?
Okay, you know, the board members that have been with us for a couple of years, you know this has been a pretty long process. And we've had two different groups come in and give presentations and different things. And we've looked at partnering with different people and different things. And the trend is around surrounding counties and across the state of Kentucky, they are hiring nurse practitioners, whether it's through other groups or different things of that sort. So for me personally, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think we're providing services for our kids that they may not have. So what we would like to ask the board to do is to hire, to create a nurse practitioner and health coordinator position, for us to hire our own nurse practitioner. And that would be under the board. They would, you know, part of the issue with the other groups that came in, our nurses and our nurse practitioner were not going to be employees of the board. They weren't going to get the same benefits, they were going to lose some of their retirement. So by doing this ourself and adding this position by ourself, all our nurses, our nurse practitioner, same, nothing changes other than that our nurses can start billing for Medicaid. So we will be able to start billing for Medicaid, our nurses will be able to do that. Other than that, they will remain our employees and under our control. I know a lot of nurse practitioners that are through these other groups, they have to work in the summer at clinics and different things of that part. And from my understanding, when COVID broke out, they were pulled from the schools. So by doing this ourself, and the huge advantage is, you know, if a kid is sick and they walk in and the nurse feels that they need to call the parent, they will call the parent and say, you know, so-and-so is sick, I think they need to see a doctor. If you would like to take your child to your primary care doctor, then come get them and take them, or you can see the nurse practitioner. So, so those students that have their own doctors will have the choice to go or not. The students that don't have a family doctor, which is what will benefit the most with this program, is that they could see a nurse practitioner in school. So our nurse practitioner can do COVID tests, can start COVID testing immediately. They can test for strep throat, different things of that sort. One thing that we've talked about is that they can do all the sports physicals. So they can do the physicals for employees. So when the nurse practitioner becomes full in effect, staff and students can see the nurse practitioner. So part of our goal with a nurse practitioner is, a kid that is sick gets seen by a professional, and they can do it here at school, not having to go get an appointment or do anything different of that. And we can take things, take care of things immediately, which we're hoping will keep staff and students in the building. So that's the purpose, and that's what we were accomplishing, trying to accomplish with the nurse practitioner, is to be able to provide for those students that don't have a primary care physician.
In this position, anybody, you know, with that degree can apply.
Yes, yes. With this position, they have to, the only condition is the health, well, yes, because in order to be a nurse practitioner, you have to have, you have to be an RN. So like, the health coordinator has to be an RN, but with a nurse practitioner, they've already got their master's degree, which means they're well above that. So yes, we will post that, we will hire as a classified position and move from there.
Okay.
And the funds for this?
The funds, right now, it's an additional $42,000 for the school board. With the current positions that we have, so we're talking about adding 42,000, and the pay scale that we got, you can kind of see there, the pay scale. And, and just, just to be honest with you, it's quite a bit lower than they could make in a private practice or in a clinic themselves. So we base that off of the other schools that have that to be competitive on that. The other part is, we can always use our ESER funds money to, to fund that position. So what we would like to do is say, we do have money, if we need to put in money from the ESER funds, we can fund that through that, through that money that's given to us from the federal government. We're hoping next year, the start of next year, that we will start billing Medicaid. And we're hoping that when we start billing Medicaid, that that will actually pay for the nurse practitioner's position. The good part about keeping it in-house and us doing it is if it doesn't work, we're not under contract with any other group. Some of those have anti-competition clauses and things of that sort. Let's say we try this for a year and it's a complete disaster, we don't have to continue it, because we have that option.
Well, the thing that I like about the possibility of this over some of the others that we've looked at, which, you know, as you said, this been going on for a while, is that our nurses and, well, everything about the program this way will be under our control.
Right.
Otherwise, it was kind of under control of someone outside the school system. And with it this way, we've got full control of it. If it doesn't work, then we just step back and look at something else.
And you don't have to worry about.
And we're not tied to anything.
And you also don't have to worry about another provider pulling out.
That is correct.
After six months, if it doesn't work out, so.
We have also already budgeted for a nurse practitioner position in our draft budget for next year.
Okay.
So even if we started mid-year this year, the only portion we would have to pick up this year would be anything from this point forward if we didn't, you know, if we make it effective in this school year. If we make it effective July 1 and forward, it's already taken into account, because we knew, we've been talking about this for a year now. So we went ahead and put it in there as a maybe, if we wanted it, needed it, and in that way, we could see what those numbers look like, in case we went that direction.
Yeah. Can we use any of the special COVID funding that we're receiving for this position?
That's what Ms.
That's the ESER funds.
So when he says ESER, sorry.
Sorry.
ESER and GEAR are some of our CARES Act money. We can. The only caveat with that is that it is limited to a couple of years. So, you know, we have two more school years after this year that we can use that for.
And by then, Medicaid hopefully would pay for it.
And that is the hope, is that we could build it up so much between now and the time that we don't have those extra funds to help offset that cost, that it will help at least pay for the additional cost that we would be incurring compared to what we currently have.
You mentioned billing Medicaid. What about those with private insurance? Would we also handle that?
No, no.
Okay.
We have talked about it, but we're not even close to being there. We want to tackle Medicaid first, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay.
And for everybody watching in the audience, when I say ESER funds, that is the CARES Act money that the government has given, the federal government is coming down. Now, I will tell you, the latest talk is that there's a third round coming. So, you know, I told you before, and Trevor, you weren't here at this last meeting, but we're meeting with principals again on March 1st, because we're developing a three-year plan of how we're going to use those ESER funds to provide the best opportunity for our students. So when I say we'll use our ESER funds, we know we're going to have academies, winter academy, spring academy, fall academy, summer, summer academies to help our students that are behind to get caught up with the effect of COVID-19 and different things. So when I say ESER funds, that's our federal money.
So Ms. Riley was talking about the ratio, trying to get it to 250 to 1. Could we use those funds for a counselor?
We can, except you have to be real careful when you, when you hire staff, because when that money runs out, the board would have to either choose to do, to fund that position, or you would have to cut it. And you know, a counselor, you know, you're talking 60,000, you know, 70,000 for a counselor. So if you add one, two, or three, those add up quickly, plus we also had to pay fringe benefits. And one thing with the ESER funds, KDE came out and said, if you spend 70, or 85% of your ESER funds on direct services for students, they will give us an additional $75 a kid. So, of course, the issue is what falls under that category. For example, that we're trying our best to get KDE to allow us to Chromebooks to us, our direct service to the students, but we can't use Chromebooks to get that $75 per kid.
They state that textbooks are a direct service, but not Chromebooks.
Right.
What's a textbook?
So this is what, and so we're all, you know, on the finance officer's side.
Even though we've had to use Chromebooks since March.
Yes. And so we, as finance officers, the superintendents, we're all kind of going back and really pushing and making them define what direct services mean.
You gotta be creative to find ways to use this money.
Yes. Well, and it's 85%, that's a large chunk for direct services. And if they're excluding huge chunks of that with technology, which is what a lot of districts have used with their past money on and that kind of thing, you know, that's the thing. Another thing that, Mr. Davis, I just want to point out there, with those salaries, anything that's paid out of a federal grant, and this is a federal grant, he talked about the fringe. Well, the fringe automatically goes much higher for anyone that pays into teachers' retirement. So if we pay for that out of general fund or out of a state grant, we only pay 3% of their retirement. If it goes to a federal grant, it's 16.105%. And then we also have to pay their health benefits at that point, the employer portion of their health benefits that the state currently picks up for anyone that's paid out of our local funds or with state funds. And for a family plan, I mean, you're talking, it could get up to $17,000 in a year for one person's family plan on the employer portion. So you have to be very, I don't know, you have to be very careful and really pick and choose what you're going to use that money on. And so, and we've been doing this, sorry, we've been doing this for years with all of our title funds. So we do the same thing every year, we look at which staff costs us less to go out of those federal grants and that kind of thing. So it's not that we can't pay for staff out of it, but we're using a lot of those staff that cost us a lot less right now in our title fund, so we would have to do the same kind of thing if we're going to do that.
And basically, now, we can't use it for Chromebooks, but we can use it for student desks. That will count as direct services for the students, for that one. But a couple superintendents, I was on with them this morning during a webcast with CKEC superintendents, and basically, if you use the ESER funds for staff, you're basically, you're basically getting 50 cents on the dollar, because the fringe benefits and all that other stuff, it ends up cutting what you can get for that.
So you can't pay for the fringe with the ESER funds?
Yes, we have to, which is why, which is why it ends up being about $50 for 100 that you spend, because it's all, the other 50 goes for all the fringe benefits. So what we'll try to do.
But if we don't find any other ways to spend it.
Yes. And that's what a lot of districts are, are, you know, other finance officers I'm talking to and that kind of thing, I mean, we have looked and looked and looked, because it is a larger chunk of money, and you do only have basically two and a half years to spend it, that we may end up putting costs of staff and then offsetting those costs in our general fund to where we can pay for other things out of general fund. And that's what we do.
So we need to start, so we need to start figuring this out sooner than later.
Yes.
Like for the next two to three years.
Yes.
That is correct.
Yeah. And that's all the time out we have, we're getting back together with principals and directors and stuff on March 1st. They've already been charged with getting together their needs and their buildings instructionally and facilities-wise, and, and then that way, we can really look at, for the whole district, what is the best use of these funds and make a plan for that for the next, you know, two and a half years, basically.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had a question, like, more specifically, just regarding to the nurse practitioner position. So with the creation of the, like, I kind of view it as similar to what you were kind of talking about in the beginning, with like, this being like tier two, per se. But like, how does the role of Medicaid play with like beefing that up? Would it potentially offer up like opportunities for us to add like different services that like branch off?
I'm sorry, Trevor, I can't hear you.
You can't?
I'm hard of hearing anyway, so.
I can hear.
Everyone who works with me knows.
You gotta really get into that microphone.
I'm hearing myself, so I feel like I'm like projecting. But I was just asking, like, with, with the creation of this position and Medicaid being involved potentially on down the road, does that add like the potential for us to add more services along with this position, like through?
Absolutely. You know, and I, and I met with the school nurses yesterday and discussed this with them, to, you know, to let them know what we were talking about doing. And of course, you know, if we find out Medicaid's making money, then we might be able to pay a little better than what we're doing. And I also talked about, you know, we might be able to start providing services, materials, equipment, different things for that, that we're not able to provide right now. So, you know, if it becomes, you know, we're not in the business of making money, but if we can use that money to help make our programs better and give more opportunities and different things for our students, that's definitely what we're trying to do.
Yeah, because I was thinking about the psychologist position that they were, you know, kind of talking about, and I know that may ride on the same lines as something that we could potentially create through Medicaid.
Yes, and we know mental health services can be Medicaid billed and stuff like that, so we would just have to look into that. We kind of want to get our feet wet a little bit and then grow. We kind of want to get our feet wet a little bit and then grow, just because we've not done that before. We do, I mean, I say we've not done it. We do bill for Medicaid services for our special education students, but it's not anywhere close to what we would be doing in this capacity. And, yes. Yes.
Right.
And yes, and this is considered an expanded Medicaid service where that is school-based Medicaid. So they're a little bit different, so it's going to be a learning curve, and that's going to be part of this position, is having this person help us navigate through that as well and learn it as well.
Okay. Do we have any other questions, discussion? Okay. Can I get a motion for approval?
Make motion for approval.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery with the motion. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Mr. Pruitt with a second. Mr. Davis, we need roll call, please.
District 1, Trevor Short?
Yes.
District 2, Larry Jaeger?
Red.
Yes. District 3, Billy Montgomery?
Yes.
District 4, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District 5, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you all so much for that.
Absolutely. Okay, we have the Healthy at School update. Ms. Hazlitt?
And Mr. Jaeger.
This is just an update reflecting of some of the changes that we're needing to make in order to come back with five days' instruction with all those, all our students. We just needed to clarify. The first slide in red, just clarify, we will have some hand sanitizer available in the students for use. That was something we didn't have. I think we had it in there that they were going to use it in the cafeteria, and that is a change. And then also, you're going, still at the top, they are going to have the ability to eat in their classrooms on that very first slide, I'm not sure.
Oh, first slide? I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's slide 1, slide 1 and 2. There you go. So at the bottom, students do have the ability to eat in their classrooms or the cafeteria. So we do have that flexibility in both of those locations.
That's good.
But they may not be six feet apart, and that is allowed. They can lower their masks some, but that isn't, we just wanted families to know that in that area, in those classrooms, obviously, if they're at full capacity or close to full capacity, they will not be six feet apart. The second update is the instructional information for families that, and the date on there may be flexible, that may be something you all have to decide later, but we need to let them know that school will be five days a week, we will continue to have our virtual option, but we will be coming five days back in person. And so we will not be going to the hybrid once this is approved.
Okay.
So those are the only updates to the plan.
I'm glad to see that they can go to the cafeteria now.
Yes. And we've been doing, the kicker really was more the classroom because of the smaller, the larger number of students in smaller space, but they can do either, you know, in different buildings, it's like the elementary school, they're staying in their classroom with those students all day long, so it's safer for them to stay with that group of students without their mask, without interacting with another group of students. But in the high school, they're interacting and they're able to spread out in the cafeteria in a larger space with more room. So it's just, we wanted to, it's different based upon the buildings.
Okay. Any questions about this plan, gentlemen? Discussion? Okay.
So are we ready to return to five days a week? Is there anything else that we need to do?
Other than get some, once we get the vaccination, hopefully Saturday, things will go well, we'll have the majority of our staff, we'll have that round one, and then if we can, you know, get the time for that vaccination to kick in, I feel like we're, I feel like we're as ready as we're all ever be, honestly. I feel like we've got a second.
The only thing, the only thing that we're not ready for is at the elementary. You know, we're waiting on those 300 desks so we can have instruction at the elementary. And until those desks come in, we will have to continue hybrid at the elementary school until we get able to get to expand the numbers by those desks being there.
So is this kindergarten through second?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we put, we got three bids, and part of the bid process, we told these furniture companies, if they could not guarantee us by March 8th, they couldn't bid on it. So we got the prices and we took the one the lowest, and they haven't given us a shipping date because the day we ordered was the day of the ice storm and they're shipping from Texas. So, you know, it may be, it may be that I have to call a couple of these others to say, okay, if you can't get them here, then I'll have somebody else get them here. So I'll be working on that. But other than that, we talked with principals yesterday, and everybody other than that, than the vaccination and the desk, we're ready to roll.
Is the, what's the time period? Is it recommended mandated two weeks? What's the, I do have some questions about that, but I'll let you answer.
It, I think, I think it's a recommendation. There's nothing that says it has to.
Okay.
But for the vaccination to be at its fullest effect, it takes two weeks. So some schools are saying, okay, we're going to take those two weeks off to give that vaccination to where it's at full effect. The other difference it does, if you go, let's say you go back seven days after the vaccination, and a teacher gets quarantined, or a teacher has a kid that has COVID and they've been in close contact, they will have to quarantine 14 days.
The teacher?
Yes. Or and the student, depending on who is in close contact.
Yeah. Once that two weeks is in, the teacher would not.
Now, once you, if you wait 14 days and a kid comes in and you have close contact with that child, you do not have to quarantine.
But that's the same as if it happened tomorrow at school, right?
It is right now, yes. But what you could do by going-
It's just a larger sample size.
Yeah. By going early seven days, you could quarantine, some teachers could be quarantined 14 additional days as opposed to just letting the 14-day period for the vaccination. Am I, is that clear as mud?
Yeah, but it's the same, I mean, they're going, you know, the hybrid, it'd be the same until that two weeks or whatever. I mean, it's just, it's just more kids there at once.
Yes.
So it's-
You're just increasing your odds of being exposed to a number of students.
Yeah, the odds may go up.
So you're, you're-
The odds, you know, that you can still be exposed, it's just after that 14 days, if that person's exposed, they don't have to quarantine.
Yeah, but the-
That's, that's the only, the difference.
The thing is, the teachers are around the same kids that will be back every day right now. So you understand what I'm saying? Like, a kid comes in on Monday, if they have COVID, the teacher is exposed and then-
But if there's within six feet of that student.
Right.
So you're increasing the number of students that you're within six feet.
Yeah, it just increases the odds.
Because you're going to have more students in that room at one time.
Is that quarantine rule, is that a mandate or recommendation?
That's a rule.
That's, that's a mandate.
Yeah, that's, that was a-
I want to get the, okay.
Like the two-week window is the, once that two weeks is done, we're good for 90 days, and then we get, are back into quarantining again. Yeah, I understand. But all the safety procedures are going to be maintained in place, you know, as far as the students are going to main, the K through 8, they're going to stay in their classrooms, that, the teachers will change classrooms. We're still going to minimize the exposure for students, masks will still be worn, you know, all those safety procedures, hand washing will still be in place. So those things are not going away anytime soon, so-
The checking of temperatures.
Yes. So, you know, those safety features, you know, I think parents should feel very secure as far as the things we have in place, we will continue to do just because staff's vaccinated, we realize students haven't been. So we want them to be safe, too.
So it's essentially, we're at the same place we were in the fall when we were going five days a week, except now we have vaccines, which the first round are 85% effective, I guess. So, and the numbers, that stupid map, but they're like close to the same as what they were when we were in the fall. So essentially, there's no difference from the fall. We have kids coming five, would come five days a week, except for the teachers, most of the teachers will have at least one round of vaccine already.
Yes.
Okay. So we're in the same boat as if we are in the fall, and we're, teachers are 85% more secure from receiving, yeah.
I mean, right now, they're 85% because they've already had the first vaccine.
Yeah, in two weeks, they'll be 95, is that what it bumps?
Yeah, I think it's 95.
Pretty high.
Okay.
So on the plan, looking at it, it's recommended the 15th, correct?
For us to, for the staff to have two full weeks would be the 15th.
I do the 15th.
We have two different ideas.
Understood.
We're kind of combining these, aren't we?
Well, well, actually, the return to school plan doesn't have a motion on it, it's just a discussion. Yeah. I was looking at that a minute ago, I wanted to make sure.
It is left that we can make whatever motion, one high school, or a regularity motion.
Right. Right.
Okay. So we understand the Healthy at School, and we just need to figure out the date.
So the date I can change on the Healthy at School?
So we can go ahead and we can go ahead and approve that, and then we have the other discussion.
So, yes.
Okay, so what we can do right now, we can, we could make a motion to approve the Healthy at School plan, then have our discussion. So, that being said-
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pruitt makes the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery? All in favor? Okay.
Mr. Jaeger?
Is he back?
I think he's gone again.
I'll have to call him.
Okay.
I'll call him back.
Okay, so now we can discuss the return to school plan.
And my recommendations tonight will be March 15th to start back five days a week with those students that have signed up for in-person. One, it gives us a little extra protection with our staff.
Hi, Mr. Jaeger.
And if we're, if a COVID case comes, those teachers don't have to, or aid or bus driver, they don't have to quarantine once they have the two full weeks. One other concern, it's not a big concern, we'll make it work, is the desk at the elementary that gives us a little more time to get those in. I would prefer all schools be five days a week, but if we have to adjust that, that's okay. The other thing, and this one mainly affects Mr. Tatum and Mr. Guerra, is the ninth, correct, Mr. Tatum? The ninth is the state ACT date. And at the high school and at Mercer Central and Day Treatment, the ones that are in high school, those students will be, the ones that are not juniors will be virtual, so we'll only have juniors in the building taking the ACT. So, you know, it's important we decide tonight because they already have a plan for the hybrid that's in place right now that they're ready to execute. And if we decide to do something, they're going to have to redo everything and try to figure out how to do the ACT for that. You know, and there's nothing that says we have to start on a Monday. You know, you could say, we could split the difference and say, you know, after the 9th, the ACT's over, we start on the 10th. The only thing we're going to lose is those three days, if we have 15 teachers that are exposed, they have to quarantine 14 days, whereas if we give them the full 14 days, we have three students or three teachers exposed, we go on as normal. And when I say teachers, you also have to remember, that's bus drivers, that's custodians.
Right, that's staff. So going back to the desks, you feel good you're going to have them because I guess my question is, you know, I don't want to start back any later than 15th.
Yeah.
And I certainly want those little ones especially to be able to be back in school and learning.
I can't guarantee you, but I may be doing a lot of woodwork in the meantime to make sure it happens.
Do we have any old desks that we can use? I mean-
We have already used those, and, you know, the, here's, just to put it to you bluntly, the elementary has used these tables since, probably since I was in the elementary school. So there's not any in the school that they're, that are not already using. So, you know, at the high school, the high school does have extra desks, we could cut down on the number of that, but, you know, you're talking PK 1, 2, preschool's okay, but mainly kindergarten, first and second. And I will, I will pin the guy down tomorrow to make sure they're, I want them by the 8th so that I can have them in the rooms because it will take us a little time. And if not, I'll call the other companies and see what we can do to get them here. If I have to drive to Texas, I don't mind if I drive to Texas.
Road trip.
I'm not working, I'll go with you.
Huh?
I'm not working, I'll go with you.
But I will, we will do everything possible to make sure-
I know a guy with a trucking company, I'll just tell him, and they'll go pick it up, I guarantee it.
Okay. Any other discussion, gentlemen?
Well, I mean, my thoughts are, the minut, I think it's minut, I'm sure there's no study that's been done, but, or maybe there was, who knows? By putting everyone five days a week versus, you know, how we have it now, the teachers are exposed to the exact same students, it's just the density of the space is different. And I don't know, like, if it's a 10% higher chance, or 20%, or 2%.
Sure.
But I don't think that that should get in the way of sending us back to school sooner than later, so.
The biggest difference in that is the teachers will have 14 days of the second vaccine on the 15th.
Yep. And they'll have 14-
Anytime before that, they will not have it.
Right.
That's the biggest difference.
And they're exposed almost the exact same amount if it's hybrid because it's just the density of the classroom.
They're exposed the same amount, it's just the quarantine issue.
But they-
I think that's the thing, biggest thing we got to, we got to look at is the quarantine issue.
They are exposed the same amount, but they don't have the 14 days.
Right, but they don't have the 14 days if they got it tomorrow. So there's no difference between if they got exposed tomorrow during the AB or hybrid plan as waiting till the 15th. If you wait till the 15th, it's fewer days, but if you go and they're exposed tomorrow, then it's, then it's just, it's the same.
If they're exposed tomorrow, they have to quarantine. If they're exposed the 15th, they don't.
Their exposure's still the same, it's just they wouldn't have to quarantine after the 14 days is what billies.
That is correct.
And that's how I understand it, too.
After 14 days.
After the 14 days. So if you come back, let's say hypothetically, you come back the 10th, 10th, 11th, 12th, any teacher gets exposed any of those three days, they're on quarantine for two weeks.
Right.
But then we come back on the 15th and that person's exposed 15th, 16th, 17th, they don't have to quarantine. They keep moving.
Right.
That's, that's how I understand-
That's right.
-the difference because of the two-week period that is a mandated thing.
Yes.
Yeah, the possibility of transmission, it never changes, that never, the percentage of that happening never changes. It's just the response that our teachers have to quarantine or not quarantine is the question, is the big issue.
Right. So we're taking kids going tomorrow to, or let's say Tuesday. So they go to class on Tuesday, we do five days a week, and teacher gets exposed, so she's quarantined, she or he's quarantined for 14 days, right?
Right.
So we stay with the hybrid plan. On Tuesday, they're exposed to someone with COVID. They're once again quarantined for 14 days. That's, that's where there's no difference, it's just the likelihood of getting exposed is maybe, I mean, I like to think in my head 2%, you know, but I'm just making up numbers.
Yeah, it's going to be 2%, you know, it could be that number at any point, whether it's tomorrow, September, whatever.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't think it makes a difference if we wait or not, other than the rule.
Let me ask you this, Dennis. Okay, let's say we were, let's say we, say we want to start the 10th. Okay?
Start what?
Let's say we want to start the 10th, all right, to, for the ACT stuff especially. You know, you get three teachers that get exposed. For that, for that situation, how does that affect beyond the, beyond that, as far as the five days, those kids, as far as virtual learning, what, what, what could happen in that situation?
Well, the way it is set right now, if a teacher is quarantined, and, and they're not sick, then we encourage them to teach from home. So they will get on Google meetings from home and teach. The only difference is, we have to then have someone in the classroom to supervise the
You gotta have a sub, you gotta have a sub too.
So, um, and right now, um, yeah, there's, there's not been one single day where we've had everybody fulfilled. What the hybrid does allow us to do is, we have a little bit of flexibility, that if we have three teachers call out, we can cover in-house. Once we go full capacity and we have three teachers down, we don't have the flexibility, uh, to be able to have, pull people to cover from things for there. Principals, am I, am I summarizing that correctly?
You want to come up here?
Come on up, Spencer.
Come on down.
The biggest issue with quarantining students or teachers is gonna be the teacher issue, because of, of the lack of substitutes. Today, we had three teachers that were out, and only had two subs, and that's counting one of our full-time subs. So, you know, if, if we have to quarantine 50 students or 100 students, we can get by with that, but if we have to quarantine three or four teachers, it's, it's very, very difficult. So, the, to me, the teachers is more of a concern with the quarantine process than the students. Because like I said, most of our teachers that have had to work from home, they've been able to teach from home, but it's still, we still have to have a certified person in, in the classroom to do the supervision.
And we're, unlike a regular sick day, they're out for a day or two. This will be 14.
Yes.
At this point.
Yeah.
If you start, even, even if you started the 12th, you're, you're still, you're still running that possibility.
Yeah, we're taking the possibility every day. It's, it's like Mr. Pruitt said, I mean, every day, we're taking a chance, whether we're in the hybrid model, or whether we're five person, five day a week in.
It's just the difference is, you're gonna have the kids in there five days a week, if you start early, if the kids are gonna be there, they won't stop coming. It's just the challenge you would have, is trying to find a sub for possibly up to 14 days during that time.
And it's the same with the AB.
Right.
Right, that is true.
Yeah, from my standpoint, the challenge from day one has been, teacher and substitute shortage has been the challenge. You know, because when we, we first did this, we, we went a few days there where we had, we, I mean, we had a large number of students that were quarantined, and were learning from home, and, and we can deal with that, we can deal with that, it's the teacher, it's the teacher issue is what, is what causes the issues at the, at the school level.
So, explain, uh, the process you have for the ACT, exactly how's it, how's that, is it, are you splitting it over two days, or?
No, it's, it's one day, and that's, that's mandated by the state. So, what we typically do during the ACT is, the juniors are in the building, and freshmen and sophomores take a college visit, and seniors do job shadowing, which those three options are not, they're not out there. So, this year, we were, the juniors are gonna be in the building, just like, just like normal, uh, the freshmen, sophomores, and seniors would just do a virtual day from home, much like we're gonna do this upcoming Monday. The teachers wouldn't be, be available to do Google meetings, because they're, all the teachers are gonna be involved in administering the ACT, because typically, on a normal ACT day, we have about anywhere from 20 to 22 kids per classroom. Well, we can't do that with the COVID guidelines and ACT guidelines, so this year, we're gonna have to use all of our teachers to, to test in many more rooms. So our, our number of students in a room will be anywhere from eight to 10 students, and literally, normal, around 20 to 22. So that's why it's gonna take our entire teaching staff to administer the ACT. So, our students, our freshmen, sophomores, and seniors on that day, will just be learning from home with assignments, like a, kinda like an old-fashioned NTI day, or Titan Learning Day.
You'll just have the assignment ahead of time.
They'll have the assignment ahead of time, and they'll work on that from home, because the teachers will not be available to do Google meetings all the periods, because they'll be administering the ACT. So, but it'll be very, it'll be very similar to what we're gonna do this coming Monday, because of the vaccination schedule.
So, so there's, so that's, you're really not affected by five days a week versus hybrid plan, then?
For the ACT?
Right.
No, it's, it'll be the same plan for the, for the ACT, it's just gonna be the, uh, juniors in, in the building on that day.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, we have, uh, some students that have, um, have accommodations, and those accommodations are different depending upon their, uh, their IP. So some students will take it over multiple days, so, uh, some students could be taking the ACT over a four-day period, it just depends on what their accommodations are, uh, for that.
But that's not gonna affect other students coming?
No, no.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, um, any other discussion about this, about start date, or?
And, Mr. Phillips, can I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
You know, our teachers are ready, they want the kids back in, they want to get their vaccination, don't get me wrong on that, but I do want, you know, with all the national news, and teacher unions, and all the other stuff, um, I've talked with probably 50 teachers, and they're all like, we'll make it work, because we want our kids back in school. One thing too, that we, that we need to focus on too, that we've talked about, once we go back, we're, we're back in. Now, if we have a community outbreak, kinda like we did after Christmas, we may have to adjust and do something, but my intentions are, once we go back, if we don't have a community outbreak, we will be five days a week until, uh, the last day of school for students.
You would treat that just like any, what a flu outbreak or anything at that point?
Yeah, it would be just like that. You know, and we're always subject to executive order, so obviously, we would have to follow if something came along with that.
Which, you know, that was another thing the governor said, kids can go back March 1st, and, and then he's kinda washing his hands of it after that.
In some form, he did say, some form of in-person, which.
I think that was.
In-person can be one, one day a week or something.
Yeah, I think that you do have some school districts, very few that have not gone back to any kind of in-person, so I.
I think that was a push towards Jefferson County.
Well, Fayette County too, probably, so.
Which Fayette County started back with their little ones.
I, I know, uh, my sister's a first grade teacher, uh, in, in a district that their students came Monday for the first time since last March.
Wow.
And they were only doing that grade, the, the elementary, uh, up to the grade two, I think, and then they're gonna phase into others, yeah.
So you are recommending March 15th?
Yes.
Full five days, let's go.
Yes.
Is there any debate, discussion about that date, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I don't see the sense in waiting. I know that, you know, there's a 14-day, the quarantine's different, and, but I don't think there's a higher risk of exposure that's material, using an accounting term, Amber, it's not a material risk that we're taking by sending them back. I mean, it, if, if I had, if it was just me deciding when they're going back, I would say Tuesday, after they get their, after the one day of virtual, to recover from the second dose. I don't know what everyone else's thoughts are, that's why we have a school board, not one person.
Right.
My, my thought is that we need to wait till the 15th, because that will give us the most protection for us, for our staff, that will give them the, the biggest chance of not having a problem from it if they are exposed. That will give us, us as a school system, the biggest chance of not having to have them quarantined for two weeks, or 14 days, whatever you, however you wanna count it, uh, if they are exposed. So, I, I, I just can't see that the benefit of going back with, it's not like we're not learning now, it's not like the students aren't learning now, they are learning, they are in class. But, the problem with me is, we are gonna, and, and you can say 2% or whatever, we're gonna double our chances of, of our teachers getting, having a chance of, I won't say getting exposed, having the chance of being exposed, we're gonna double that.
We're not doubling it, because the same kids are in the school.
We're sure not 2%.
Well, it's maybe 5%, but the same kids are in the school.
Not even 5%.
Around the same teachers.
I, I just can't, I cannot see the benefit of getting, getting kids back in school for 10 days.
Well, I mean, we've waited this long, why, why wait any longer?
Well, we've waited this long, so what difference does it make for 10 more days? It's not that our teachers aren't teaching them now, it's not that the kids aren't learning now.
But I can tell you though, when I, I've got two kids, and they are ready to go.
Oh, I'm ready for them to go, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not ready for them to go.
I hear, I hear it every day, unfortunately.
I, I, you won't find 2% of the kids or teachers or anywhere around that's not ready to go to school. Uh, you won't find that, I'm not saying that. I'm ready for them to go, I've been ready for them to go a long time, but it is not the right call to make at this time.
Mr. Short, do you have any comments, and then I'll get Mr. Jaeger here in a minute. Welcome to the school board.
I don't know, I, I, I don't really know, I don't, I don't really have a preference either way, I, I do have a child that's, uh, hybrid right now, um, I mean, all things considered, I know teachers are ready, uh, but, you know, maybe with that, you know, a couple of week cushion that gives the teachers an opportunity to reframe their mind, you know, and get ready for the full five days, or whatever they need to do to prepare, if anything at all, um, but I, I don't know if it's a, you know, if we have an, if we're gonna make the decision tonight, we don't have an opportunity to run that by, you know, them to see what they think, uh, because we're just making a decision that's gonna be in the hands of other people that are, are gonna be, uh, uh, hands-on with the students, so I don't, I don't, either way it goes, I really don't have a preference, I guess I'll have to make one. But it'd be nice if you guys can agree, so I can. My computer died.
Mr. Jaeger, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but if you do, do you have an opinion?
I would like to see the students back in school as soon as possible, with all safety things being considered.
Ready, can you translate?
Not in here, Larry, hold on a second. Okay, go right ahead.
I said I would like to see the students back in school as soon as possible.
As soon as possible, so you, you would tend to lean more toward going before the 15th, am I hearing you correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
And, also, you know, I'm just looking at schools around us, Bergen's in school five days a week, uh, their teachers are on the same, am I right, their teachers are getting the vaccines at the same time, so, and they, they started going after the first dose, which is 85% infected. Boyle County is starting on Monday, their teachers are getting their second dose on Friday, um, and that's, you know, they're a larger school system than we are, um, and I'm sure they have the same issues, but, you know, those are just two examples of people not waiting, they're going, and.
Um, I wanna address with, we got some of the principals here. Would you all be ready to start next week, the 8th? Are you all prepared? Okay, Ms. Odell. High school's ready? But, so, so, Mr. Tatum, if we were to start back before ACT day, you would be prepared for those student, the, the ones other than juniors, on that day, they would do virtual? All those students? Yes, sir. Okay. They're gonna be virtual anyway regardless, okay, okay, so that really doesn't have any bearing. I guess the only other, uh, issue is the elementary school, which apparently is a space problem. And I think that's something that would have to be considered. Mr. Davis, you said that they would not be able to.
Right.
Be five days until these desks come in?
Yes, that is correct, because just the way that we're, the requirements of kids sitting in a straight, or in, all in the same direction and things of that sort, um.
Are, are those the same requirements for kindergarteners? I know they had different rules for masks and such at one point.
From my understanding, it's for everybody, no preschool, even kindergarten.
Even preschool, or, or I guess, I don't know, I don't, okay. Yeah. Okay.
So it sounds like to me, one of the other options would be, the other schools could start back earlier, but the elementary school won't be able to start back to the 15th, is that what I'm understanding as well, in my early discussions with you?
The, the, depending on how quick, it, it will, once they're, once they're shipped and ready, it'll take them two days to get here.
Okay.
So, you know, we're trying to get a confirmation date, if we can't get one tomorrow, I'll tell you, we'll, we'll try another vendor, and see how quick they can get them here.
I mean, I'll, I'll come up to the school and help unload them, you know?
I think that's probably the, the best option, is going to school earlier than the 15th, and then just waiting until the desks get here for the.
I'm sorry, Trevor, I can't hear you again, bro.
I said I think what, like, what you just suggested would probably be the best, the best option, is to go to school earlier, and then, when the, uh, desks come in, then we'll send the younger ones back.
And do everything in our power to get those desks ASAP, and if we have, can think of another scenario where we can get them back, using some, I don't know what else, I, like I said, I'm willing to go get some house storage or whatever.
And to go, what you're talking about, yes, I, I do know there's a couple of schools going, I, I will tell you, talking with superintendents, everybody's kinda, everybody's kinda different depending on what they've got going on. There are a couple of schools that, that connect to us that are going back to 15, some are going back the 8th, uh, it all depends on when they're getting their vaccination, as to when they're going back five days a week.
But I am right, that Boyle's going back Monday.
Yes, they are, I saw that post last night.
And, and I will tell you, as a superintendent, when you have 2,700 students, and almost 500 staff, I will always side to give our students and, and our staff the best opportunity to remain safe and healthy. So understand, that's where I come from, I do want them, I do want our students in the building as quick as possible, but if there's a difference between 85 and 95%, you know, that 10% to me, I'm gonna take the chance of delaying it to make sure that they have the best opportunity. What, and, and I will tell you, the, the fear I have, uh, and this is the part of the job that I do, Mr. Pruitt, and different things from there, but, you know, let's say we, let's say we get two staff members that get COVID during that time, and we won't ever know, but I will live with the fact of, if we'd waited to the 15th, they may have been more protected, and then I deal with that. That's just my job, and I don't wanna say that, but that's where, I just want you to know where I'm coming from.
That'll, that'll fall on us too.
Sure. Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and it's, it's sort of more, it's risk versus reward, and.
Yes.
If you're willing to take the risk, I think the reward of having the kids back in helps, I mean, the counselors talked about how, have, not having the kids in, it's, you know, in school every day is, is a big difference for them.
Mr. Gara, um, you have to take the microphone?
I just wanna have a chance to reiterate, earlier you asked us a question. And, and you said, are you ready? Let's, you know, our staffs, and I, I, I'm speaking for myself, but I think I can speak for other principals, we're always ready. You know, our careers throw us curveballs every day, um, but I also wanna just say, like, I mean, I, we also support the fact that anything we can do to give the best possible chance of, of not putting anybody in danger, whether some of us, you know, we all know that this virus affects everybody differently, and so, do we wanna take that risk? I don't know. Uh, I know I wouldn't want to, but that's your all's decision. But, are we ready? You tell us to be ready tomorrow, we'll be ready, that's our job, to be ready, but I just wanted to make that clear, so that you guys knew kinda where I stood on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
And, and, Mr. Gara, the biggest reason I was asking the principals, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any kind of special preparations you needed to make.
No logistics.
Logistics, that's.
No, listen, we're ready.
And I know, I've heard some great stories from the head of buildings, and our teachers, they'll, they'll do whatever we need them to do, as long as, you know, they want what's best for the kids, let's just, let's just be honest.
Yeah.
And so, and if that means we gotta get ready, we'll do this sooner than later, we will. I just wanted to make that clear, you know, I didn't have that.
Okay.
Make sure we're all on that same page.
And if any of the other staff here would like to speak, please step up, I'd love to hear from you. This is a great time, because this is good discussion. Sure, come on up, Ms. Odell, come on up. That's why we have this time.
I do have, um, I do have several staff members that are older, and they are concerned about their health, they are appreciative of the vaccine, they feel much more confident having, already having the first round, um, they're excited about getting the second round, they're, they're, they feel like they are gonna be a lot more protected that way. I will say that we have been able to start bringing students that are in need back five days a week already, students that either do not have internet at home, or, or reliable internet, students that have been, um, and that are in danger of fail, failing the grade, we've been able to bring those back, and the response from my teachers, I let my, I let my teachers. We've been able to bring those back and the response from my teachers, I let my, I let my teachers tell me who they wanted to bring back. You know, we, we, we made a, I had them make a list. We made phone calls to parents. Parents made sure they were, we were okay with them being safe. Um, and overwhelmingly, teachers were giving me names and are conti, like, we, we set a, a date for last Friday before the ice storm. This week I have had, they just continue, can we bring this person back? Can we bring this person back? Can we bring this person back? They, we're, we're not bringing all of our kids back, but they know that there are certain students that do need... And so we do, we are meeting those needs. So if, if there is a wait, if we, if we do choose to wait, we are still bringing students in that are in desperate need of being in person five days a week. We have those in place. So just, I wanted you to know that that's where we are at the intermediate school. Our teachers, they're like, can we just bring them all back? There are certain ones, can we just bring them all back? And I'm like, well, not yet. We have to just, there are still some, some parameters that we're, you know, we can't bring them all back. Um, but they are aware, and, and, and I will say that they are aware that there are some students that it's okay that they're in hybrid right now, cuz I, the, the word has gotten out. And now parents are requesting, requesting for students to come back. And I'm asking the teachers, how do you feel about this person coming back? And they will either say, yes, I think that's good. And I've had teachers say, no, that person is okay in hybrid right now. We've got to make sure we're only meeting the needs of the kids that really need it. So they are making this really great decisions based on what the students are, are doing in this hybrid situation. So I just wanted you to be aware, that's where we are at the intermediate school.
Okay.
And I reiterate, we will be ready with whatever you choose. We'll be ready one way or the other.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay.
So in my mind, I have two scenarios. I have one scenario where we go five days a week and we do not have a vaccine. And we have, the second scenario is we go five days a week and we have teachers who have gotten the first vaccine, which is eighty-five percent effective. The first scenario was when we went back in the fall. And we did not have any lengthy discussion about it. We sent them back. This scenario, we're eighty-five percent closer, you know, to being, I don't know, say, yeah, immune, safe from the virus.
Yeah, I mean, the last time there, we weren't, we weren't protected. At this point, we're eighty-five percent protected.
And we sent them back five days a week. So why, why are we even thinking about not sending them back five days a week if the teachers are eighty-five percent more immune, I guess? That's my, that's my thought.
When you say we, which we did, but we weren't all in agreement with it the first time either. I'll, I'll put it that way.
Very true, very true. We weren't.
That's why there's five of us.
That's right. I don't know.
Okay.
And, and she made one comment there too, that I relate to very, very well, older people, okay? So, uh, we do have, I mean, I'm seventy-five years old. We do have teachers that aren't that old, but they are older people and they are the most at-risk people. So just remember that too.
Yeah, I didn't...
I, I, I can't, I can't, I just can't see the, 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 taking the chance for our kids to be back essentially five more days of school. Cuz they're gonna be there half...
I'm thinking nine.
They're gonna be there half the time anyway.
Oh, half the time, well.
Five more days of school is what we're gonna, we're talking about here. So it...
Do we wanna make...
Whatever you decide.
Well, I guess the biggest thing is we need to make, I know your original plan has five days in person beginning March fifteenth.
Correct.
That's on the Healthiest School Plan, but that's up for discussion. That can just, as Esther said, that can be edited.
Yes, absolutely.
So I guess the question we need to come up with, we need to have a motion on whether to go ahead with the fifteenth or if we wanna move the date up. And if so, to win the five days and then have a vote.
You wanna do that or make a motion for a different... Oh, well, your, your way.
I, I know, I know how this is gonna end already, cuz we done been through this. I'll make the motion to start back the fifteenth of March.
Okay. So Mr. Montgomery's put a motion on the floor to start the fifteenth.
I know what this is gonna come.
Do we, do we have a second on that? And Mr. Jaeger, did you hear the motion on the floor?
I second this motion.
So you second going back on the fifteenth?
No, he said clips.
You, he does, he does second Mr. Montgomery's motion. Okay, so we have a, so we do have a motion and a second. So we need to have a vote on this. So let's do a roll call.
Guess who's number one?
I didn't tell you about this part, did I, Mr. Short?
That's the only problem being District One.
Trevor Short, District One.
Yes.
Larry Jaeger, District Two.
He said yes.
He said yes. Uh, Billy Montgomery, District Three.
Yes.
Cliff Pruitt, District Four.
No.
Randy Phillips, District Five.
No.
So the motion passes. We will go back to school on the fifteenth, five days. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay. So the next thing we need to do is we need to enter into an executive session pursuant to KRS sixty-one point eight ten F. Can I have a motion to enter executive session?
Make that motion.
Mr. Montgomery makes the motion. Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Mr. Pruitt, all in favor? Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna vote.
Amber, you can turn these off right now? Okay. Okay, I need a motion to exit executive session, please.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery, all in favor? Okay, now we have action related to executive session. Uh, Mr. Davis, you have the floor.
Uh, I have a letter here I'd like to read. Mercer County Board Member, Staff and Families. It is with mixed emotions that I am announcing that I am retiring effective August first, two thousand twenty twenty-one. I consider it a true blessing to have been given the opportunity to work for the Mercer County School System and the community that I love for over thirty years. I'm very proud of accomplishments, accomplishments and growth our district has made over these years. I feel that Mercer County Schools have been and continue to provide all students with opportunities for success, whether it be in the areas of academics, performing arts, or athletics. And we are preparing students to be successful citizens for our community. The Mercer County students never cease to amaze me in what they're able to do and accomplish. Mercer County students are able to compete at the highest levels in, in any area they choose to participate. I'm also very proud of the Mercer County School Board Members and Staff that I've been able to work with over these years. I believe each decision made, whether, whether it's district level or not, and I do believe this wholeheartedly, that each decision was made in the best interest of the children and the families of Mercer County. I consider it an honor to be a part of the Mercer County School System and will continue to work to provide guidance and support for our district until I retire. And to those that I work with daily, I can't thank you enough. I've been blessed with the best employees that anyone could wish or have. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Dennis, I just wanna say thank you for being on this board for four years now. I've taken over the chair many, many, many times. And I appreciate not only your leadership during this time of the friendship. And as I told you in the room, I told you before, the first time I met Dennis, my son was kinda in a situation that wasn't his fault, by putting him to the attention of the...
I think your mic's on.
Sorry about that. I was, as I was saying, I just appreciate Dennis's friendship, uh, leadership during this time. Uh, and I was, as I was beginning to say, first time I met Dennis, uh, my son was put into ISAP for a day for a situation that, you know, a lot of people felt wasn't his doing. But, um, Dennis came to me, comforted me that day, uh, just let me know he's gonna be okay. He got through it just fine. And for Dennis not, to not know at that point who I was, but yet willing to step out and help a parent who was concerned. So a lot to me about the leadership we have in this school district and the leader we have. And so that was something my family will never forget and I will never forget. And we will certainly miss you. I don't want to accept this, but I understand. And you will certainly be missed by everybody.
Dennis, I, I've been here through the whole time with you, buddy. Um, and, uh, I, I, you know, as we talked there a little bit ago, I, I, I don't wanna see this. And I told you when you handed me the paper, I wasn't gonna take it, but I did. But, uh, I, I honestly appreciate your, your thoughts and what you're, uh, what you're doing. Um, hopefully it's the best, works out the best for you. That's what I'll pray for from now on, that it works out the best for you and your family and, and, um, whatever your future is, I told you, man, go, there's somewhere out there that they're looking for somebody just like you. I just hope that, uh, hope that you can find that niche somewhere that'll, that you can be, uh, happy and continue on.
Thank you.
What?
I think that was Mr. Jaeger.
But, uh, I just wish you the best, buddy.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I'm, I'm not articulate, like Randy especially, he's...
I don't know about that.
I don't know, professional speaker or something, but that's not me. Uh, but we've only got to work, you know, a few months together and, but it's been, it's, it's been good. You know, I've learned a, a lot and I've seen how you, um, work with your staff. And, and I see the respect that they have for you, that principals and teachers and, and, uh, I think that's something you should be proud of. And, um, you know, it's, uh, it, it's a good thing that you've done. So, um, I just wish you luck and, um, sorta jealous, you know? I wish I could retire, you know? But, uh, yeah, I just wish, wish you the best and, um, hope everything goes great.
Thank you.
Well, what a first, uh, meeting. But, uh, you know, all things considered, I, you know, I wouldn't be here if not, you know, had been for you, you know, willing to, uh, reach out to me about, um, this, this seat being open. Um, so, you know, with that being said, I, you know, I thank you for seeing something in me, you know, to, to, you know, gear you to, to reach out to me about it. Um, I'm not really into, you know, first time this or this or that, but, you know, I, I highly respect you. I've always respected you, um, you know, just from, from being a young kid and being in school and, you know, different things of that nature. So I just, I wish you the best in, uh, in whatever it is that you do, uh, going forward. And you know, it's one thing that I always think about. You know, we have assignments and we have careers and, you know, you, you don't know how long you're gonna be on an assignment. Could be two months, could be thirty years, you know? But, um, I think that, you know, ultimately, uh, you know, what we do for Christ is what will last. And I feel like you've, you've definitely, uh, you know, created that, 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 that long-lasting effect on everybody. Um, and blessed are luck to you going forward, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Jaeger, anything to add?
Mr. Davis, I wish you the best.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So with that in mind, uh, I do need a motion, uh, to accept the retirement letter of Mr. Dennis Davis effective August first, two thousand twenty-one.
With regrets. With, not really, maybe not regrets, but with, uh, not really wanting to. I'll make the motion to accept.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery with the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Short will second. All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, one thing real quick I do wanna circle back to, and that was the vote for the start to school and explaining my vote of no, that was only because I want the kids back in school. I just want them a little earlier in the fifteenth, but hey, you know what? We're getting the kids back. Hallelujah for that, for five days. I'm ready for that. Okay, uh, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Mr. Montgomery.
Second.
I was waiting for you to give the motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Short, all in favor?
I'll let you do it, Trevor.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Wow.